Okay. We will start the public hearing for the Stream U.S. Data Centers. I guess I'll go through the normal stuff anyway, so bear with me. My name is Mark Massey, present CEO of the GCEDC. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out today for the three public hearings on the proposed incentives for the projects. I think we've got our sign-in sheets. We've got more sign-in sheets back there if anybody would like to sign in to speak. Again, not a question and answer period. We did extend, we will extend the written comment period to Thursday at 5:00. If you wish to send an email to gcedc@gcedc.com. For the Stream U.S. Data Centers, it is a proposed $6.3 billion investment. They're looking to build a 900,000-square-foot data center at Stamp. And the project is estimated to generate a total of $218 million in local municipal revenue over 20 years, along with the creation of 122 jobs. Again, it'll be three minutes. You'll get a warning with 30 seconds left from Matt, and we'll go ahead and start. Evelyn. I got you before you sat down this time.
Yes, let's start. Evelyn Whackett, W A C K E T T. My friends call me Eve. I'm going to duplicate everything I said in the first two. And the only thing I guess I would really want to add is, from my understanding, with the data centers comes high energy demand. And when there's high energy demand, our costs go up, so our personal electric bills are going to skyrocket. Water demands as well. When those water demands go up, we have to pay more because the demand in the area goes up. Now, I live in Buffalo, New York, and again, I'll say, why should I care what's going on in Genesee County? The reason why I care about what's going on in Genesee County is because it affects our water. Water is life. We're all connected by the water. We all need the water. And if something happens to the water with this industrial park, then we all are going to suffer from that. And again, for the short-eared owl and for the rights of nature, I say I'm speaking up one more time for the wildlife, the short-eared owl especially. Thank you.
Margaret Wooster? She left?
She's heading out.
Okay. Tom Kiouk? Did I say that right? It's like K-I-O-U-K? No? Sarah Howard?
I feel sorry for Sarah.
Okay.
Hello. I'm back again, this time to share comments about Project Double Read. The backers of Project Double Read are Stream Data Centers, which used to proclaim stated commitments to environmental sustainability, social responsibility, and long-term stewardship, as well as its commitment to aligning its projects with the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals of Clean Water, Affordable Clean Energy, Responsible Consumption, and Climate Action. Mysteriously, around January 20th, this language disappeared from the homepage of the company's website. You can still find that language if you search for it very thoroughly, kind of like how you can find information about these public hearings and requested financial incentives on the GCEDC's website if you spend a lot of time clicking on various tabs. So anyway, the fair weather of Stream Data Centers commitments should make us question whether they are really commitments. Also, I fail to see how an entity that would use 250 megawatts of electricity per year and 10,000 gallons of water per day could even possibly claim environmental sustainability. By the way, that usage of 250 megawatts per year could place Stream Data Centers among the very largest energy-guzzling data centers around the world, very few of which exceed 200 megawatts in use. Similarly, the revised EAF states that Double Read would maintain onsite diesel generators using 60,000 gallons of diesel fuel per year. It was 1,500,000 gallons diesel fuel in the original, a notable change that raises questions itself. And producing emissions of 533 tons of CO2, as well as possible NO2 and hazardous air pollutant, HAP emissions known to be associated with diesel fuel. Is this environmental sustainability? Not by my definition. So if Stream Data Centers fails to test environmental sustainability, how about social responsibility? For a total of $471,560,000 in requested public subsidies, $4,625,600,000... These numbers are freaking ridiculous. In sales tax exemption, $9 million in mortgage tax exemptions, they will produce 122 jobs, or about $3,865,245 per job. Let's pause for a minute. I know, I know. No Q and A with you, Mark. But to the audience, I will ask, what else could be done with $471,560,000, beside giving it to some corporation? Could we create a lot more jobs that are actually socially responsible and environmentally sustainable? I think we probably could. So that social responsibility claim rings hollow, and we haven't even talked about the impacts of Tonawanda Seneca Nation, and how citing Double Read on a parcel that abuts their big woods and drains the nation's waterways would violate the Treaty of Canada's Commitment to Upholding the Haudenosaunee Peoples' Free Use and Enjoyment of Their Territories. Sitting a massive, noisy, light-polluting data center mere feet away from where nation citizens continue to hunt deer, gather medicine, and fish, it doesn't take someone with a detailed knowledge of treaty rights to see that there would be an extremely negative impact to the health and well-being of nation's citizens. But clearly, SDC's citation of the UN Sustainable Development Goals were just a cynical corporate ploy to brand themselves as a nice data center guys during a time we thought DEI was a good thing. And kind of similar to GCEDC's insulting webpage proclaiming their good relationship with their neighbors at Tonawanda Seneca Nation, you can't even remember when their holidays are, and they're holidays that people around the world have, even those of Celtic descent, which I'm assuming you have considering your last name is Massey. Just putting it out there, you should know. If you were actually in a good relationship, you would have reached out and asked before scheduling these hearings during the nation's midwinter ceremonies, at the very least. Okay, enough about corporate hypocrisy. Let's talk about some of the eyebrow-raising inconsistencies, baseless claims, and gaps of information in the EAF for Double Read. Project Double Read would build three 41-foot-tall, one-story buildings comprising 900,000 square feet. This is spatially equivalent to more than 15 football fields. While it may be difficult to grasp abstractly, the enormity of the visual impact of such facilities, particularly in a rural undeveloped area, conceptualization and assessment of those impacts on the people who will experience them daily is critically important. And there's absolutely no attempt to address the visual impacts of the Double Read EAF, or actually any of the EAFs. Clearly, we can't trust your assessment, Mark, since you also seem to think that the hideous green hydrogen globes at the now-defunct Plug Power site are aesthetically pleasing? Back to Double Read and its explanatory gaps. Project Double Read's EAF states there will be no impacts on wetlands, but its conceptual site plan shows buildings to be constructed at slash on the edges of two wetlands. No information is provided to explain how the foundation and walls of 41-foot-high, My apologies, we're not talking about apartments in the city of Buffalo. 300,000-square-foot structure could be constructed on the edge of a wetland without impacting it. Similarly, the EAF for Project Double Read states that the project will include no impoundments, but the site depicts stormwater retention ponds totaling 20 acres. Last time I checked, the DEC's Stormwater Management regs, a stormwater retention pond is very much an impoundment. There's also a hydrological inaccuracy here. Double Read's EAF claims these ponds would discharge west to east to pipes along Crosby Road, but the natural flow on site is east to west. Where will the water actually go? The question is especially important because, like other EAFs, Double Read fails to mention the heated water discharge that we all know will be associated with their operations. The EAF Double Read does not disclose the number of diesel fuel generators planned as part of the project, but notes each generator will use a "belly storage tank" holding 9,500 gallons, but they don't plan to list the project in the spills incident database. What happens if there's a diesel spill? As I've already mentioned, each of the data center applicants at Stamp would likely rely on backup diesel generators and would store significant quantities of diesel fuel on site adjacent to enough stream from the nation. Wetlands on and around the data centers are directly connected to wetlands and waterways in the nation. The EAF fails to attend to this issue, just as it fails to outline any meaningful plan for disposal of 120 tons of waste per year, which we can only imagine will include e-waste notoriously full of heavy metals that can leach into waterways and wetlands if disposed of improperly, which e-waste often is. Similarly missing from Double Read's EAF, any mention whatsoever of the potential for ongoing noise from operations. As I've already mentioned, none of these three data center applicants has conducted a comprehensive, meaningful noise study that takes into account the community character of the nation and its particular need for quiet, reliable, ongoing cultural activities. Noise impacts on wildlife are of particular concern to the nation since wildlife are integral to the nation's lifeways. Like other applicants, Stream Data Centers carried out what can only be described as a laughable noise study. A noise study conducted by a qualified, independent, third-party expert must be required for each proposed data center project. I oppose the allocation of public monies to Project Double Stream, which will produce zero public benefits and copious public harms. We all know that GCEDC does not actually want meaningful public comment on these incentives or on the data center proposals at all. If you actually did, why would you schedule these hearings on a weekday afternoon, bury the information about the hearings on your website, fail to share the information that members of the public would need in order to comment substantively, and tell the Daily News that, quote, "we are 80 to 90% done," unquote, with the decision-making process of sitting a data center at Stamp? Disgusting. GCEDC, you don't even do a good job of pretending that you care what the public thinks. The way you're sitting right now, your body language, everything tells me that you don't give a word I won't say. An indication of either extreme arrogance or that you're wasting a lot of money, again, taxpayer money, on a really lousy PR firm. But what we can see today is that despite your best efforts to make comment on these data centers very difficult, there are a lot of people here. And I happen to know that GCEDC has received somewhere in the ballpark of 500 public comments. People care about the expenditure of their public money. People care about the decisions you make here. People are watching you. I also want to take a moment to address Mark's comments to the Daily News. Mark stated, quote, "There are a lot of factors, and I don't want to speak for the board, but obviously, they still want to be able to achieve the overall goal of Stamp," unquote, he said, alluding to whether data centers are a good fit for the technology park. Quote, "Other factors include environmental concerns, jobs created, power and water usage," unquote. There's a lot in this statement, and I do not have time to unpack it all, but I do want to draw attention to the question about data centers in relation to the overall goal of Stamp. Now, I do not agree with that goal, which is advanced manufacturing and economic development. But I can still point out that data centers do not meet these goals. We all know why you've turned to data centers. Because Stamp is a failing boondoggle despite at least 410 million taxpayer subsidies in the direct backing and interference of our state's most powerful politicians. There are only two fully confirmed tenants, one of which Plug Power paused construction activities more than a year ago and will very likely never resume or produce, quote-unquote, "green hydrogen." You turn to data centers because Plug Power was supposed to help pay for the electrical substation, and when they backed out, you needed cash, or the whole mega-industrial scheme would fall apart. So I can tell you, no. Data centers are not a good fit. They are a desperate attempt to save face on this massively destructive and wasteful pipe dream. No to data centers. Protect our waters and woods. Stop Stamp. So here are some parting demands. GCEDC must approve the SEQR for one of these projects in a board meeting, and especially not the board meetings happening later this week on February 5th or 6th. GCEDC must produce the written cost-benefit analysis of all three projects as stipulated in general municipal law. Must widely circulate this report. Must hold another round of public meetings with significant advance notice to the public and at a time that accommodates the involvement of people who work a standard 9 to 5 p.m. schedule. GCEDC must immediately disclose the identity of the owners/operators of all of these projects. GCEDC must publicly provide the completed applications required by GMU 589-A4 and Uniform Criteria for Evaluation and Selection of Projects required by GMU 589-A5. GCEDC must ensure that all three developers carry out a third-party, verified, robust, comprehensive noise study of all three projects and widely publicize the results. In all aspects of the public process pertinent to the projects, GCEDC must follow the new Environmental Justice Sitting Law, which prohibits projects that impose disproportionate pollution burdens on disadvantaged communities like the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, who you failed to consider in this public hearing today. In all aspects of the public process pertinent to the projects, GCEDC must follow CP29 on environmental justice and provide enhanced public participation opportunities to the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and the public at large. Thank you.
Gary Surzak?
Hello, this is Gary Surzak again. Today, I am speaking, or this moment, I'm speaking on behalf of Deborah Gondek, G-O-N-D-E-K, of North Tonawanda. Dear GCEDC, pursuant to General Municipal Law 859A, I am writing to oppose the proposed financial incentives to all three projects. I am also requesting a thorough review of the impact of data centers on the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, residents of the Great Lakes Bioregion, and the health and well-being of our shared environment. The applicable general municipal law requires GCEDC to produce written cost-benefit analysis by the agency that identifies the extent to which a project will create or retain permanent private sector jobs, the estimated value of any tax exemptions to be provided, the amount of private sector investment generated or likely to be generated by the proposed project, the contribution of the project to the state's renewable energy goals and emission reduction targets as set forth in the state energy plan adopted pursuant to Section 6-104 of the Energy Law, the likelihood of accomplishing the proposed project in a timely fashion, and the extent to which the proposed project will provide additional sources of revenue for municipalities and school districts, and any other public benefits that might occur as a result of the project. My personal experience with similar bitcoin mining and data center operating in North Tonawanda, New York, is that these types of projects require additional scrutiny in order to avoid and/or mitigate the environmental and health harms associated with their operations. Data processing centers have multiple banks of computers contained in a building. Modular facilities contain the processors in multiple storage-like containers. Both facilities require enormous fans or air conditioning systems to cool down the computer equipment. The noise generated, along with the large amounts of electricity used by cooling systems and computer processes, have spurred moratoriums and bans in numerous communities across the United States. In fact, the DigiHost operation in our city has caused so many problems over the past three years that in July 2024, our Common Council unanimously approved a moratorium on any new cryptocurrency mining, AI, or data centers. Many mistake noise for an everyday annoyance. Yet for several decades now, scientific research has clearly established a link between excessive noise and various public health harms, including preventable hearing loss, heart disease, stroke, and hypertension. Noise is the most obvious problem, but increased emissions from the 60-megawatt methane gas power plant in North Tonawanda, used to power this operation, the electronic waste generated that DigiHost's use of 500,000 gallons of city water per day are also concerned. DigiHost 2024 emissions data is equivalent to 140,000 tons of CO2.
Maggie?
I'm reading a statement from Dr. Katherine Landis, L-A-N-D-I-S. My name is Dr. Katherine Landis, and I'm a Senior Research Associate at the Center for Native Peoples and the Environment at SUNY ESF. I'm a plant ecologist by training and speak for myself and not my institution. I strongly oppose granting financial incentives for Project Potentia, along with those proposed for Rampart and Double Read. None of these projects deserve any public support, so they do not benefit the public, and in fact, are projected to cause grave and irreparable harms to public and private lands, waters, airs, the soundscape, wetlands, and wildlife habitat. Data centers are liabilities due to their significant energy consumption, greenhouse gas generation, water consumption, wastewater production, as well as harmful noise, light, and air pollution. To cite these data centers in one of the state's major wetland complexes will further fragment this habitat, leading to reductions and even potentially extra patients of plant and wildlife species. I'm referring to the 20,000 acres of natural areas that make up what is commonly called the Alabama Swamp, including nearby Tonawanda and John White Wildlife Management Areas. The mosaic of forests, wetlands, grasslands... This mosaic of forests, wetlands, grasslands, and grasslands represents one of the few remaining large contiguous habitat areas in the entire state, and that's true. We should be adding to this land, not further driving landscape fragmentation. The data centers themselves are sited on wetland habitat. They may not be jurisdictional wetlands, but the facilities are planned for areas with high water table and hydroic soils, which are de facto wetlands because the soil's wet. Earlier, you were talking about, before this all started, you were talking to Eve about it's all farmland, you know, it's not really wetlands. And I just wanted to say, like, I've lost my boots in cornfields. Farmland can be wetlands. And it supports wildlife. I mean, it's not ideal habitat, but it supports wildlife. That's not in that, that's me editorializing. The data centers themselves are sited on wetland habitat. They may not be jurisdictional wetlands, but the facilities are planned for areas with high water table and hydroic soils, de facto wetlands. These areas are hydrologically connected to the nearby Tonawanda Wildlife Management Area, along with the sovereign Tonawanda Seneca Nation lands. Runoff from these sites drains west and north towards these lands, threatening the aquatic and wetland communities they are charged to protect. This land is not empty wasteland, quite the opposite. The area belongs to a significant raptor winter concentration area, northern harrier and short-eared owl. The data centers are also sited within one of New York State's DEC five grassland bird conservation centers. The proposed centers also align the edge of an important board area. IBAs are globally rare wetlands and other habitats of crucial value for birds. And these, like, wildlife management areas were set up because they're a crucial place for migrating birds for all of this hemisphere. It's an important stop, and it's not just about this area. I mean, this affects everybody from, like, Chihuahua to, like, the Yukon, you know? Which, I just feel like you don't have jurisdiction. None of the data center's applicants consider impacts for the thousands of migratory birds that rely on that area. Birds that likely breed in the area include the cerulean warbler, blue-winged warbler, plothenary warbler, and bobolink. I'm sure our birder can understand why that's valuable. Economically, even, if I don't want to be too crude because, you know, they have inherent value, but, you know, if that's what you care about, you know, the call of the bobolink is like a tourist destination. Among other species listed as species of greatest concentration need in New York, sedren, a state-threatened bird, has recently occurred in the area. A state-listed rare plant, heartleaf plantain, plantago cordota, Latin names, plantago cordo... A state-threatened plant, shellbarchicory, cariolaxanodia, which is really important for wildlife too, as a mass plant. And a state-endangered plant, frank sed, carrux franculi, also live downstream where all the runoff and drainage is going to be contaminated of the proposed data site. The population of heartleaf plantain numbers in the hundreds, making it by far the largest population in the state, the only other population that occurs along the Hudson River. Any of the facilities will destroy small-order streams, which provide unique values to fish and other aquatic life. Vernal pools, small pool-like wetlands downstream of the proposed site, support breeding woodfrogs, jeffersins, and blue-botted salamanders. The latter two have amphibians listed as a species of special concern in New York State. These amphibians are highly sensitive to small changes in water chemistry, such as salinity, pH, and the presence of pollutants such as diesel fuel. There is no way to treat salt waste that arises from runoff of parking lots cars, and this is major environmental impacts. Data centers generate noise comparable to jet planes' engines, which will drive wildlife away and interfere with migration patterns. Birds, mammals, insects, reptile, amphibian populations already face staggering challenges to their survival and do not need further insults, especially adjacent to areas protected as their sanctuaries. Finally, in all aspects of public process pertinent to those projects, GCEDC must follow the new Environmental Justice Sitting Law, which prohibits projects that impose disproportionate pollution burdens on disadvantaged communities like the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. In addition, all three data center proposals would violate the CLCPA, which it safeguard against the string of polluting facilities near disadvantaged communities, such as the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. Sincerely, Dr. Katherine Landis, Masters of Science, PhD, and Dr. Madeline Nyblade, Syracuse, New York. And just to add some of my own comments...
We are well past.
Okay, that's cool. Just to add some of my own comments. Look, I just want to say that, like, people have talked a lot about, you know, the site being adjacent to Tonawanda Seneca lands, but it's really not. It's on Tonawanda Seneca lands. It's on stolen land. This whole area is stolen land, right? And ultimately, the decision to place it there, to place it next to the big woods, to place it next to this, the area that the nation has been allowed to steward, is just a clear insult, right? It's unnecessarily cruel. It's just, I mean, I don't know if you care, but it's morally wrong. And like, I don't know, what else am I supposed to say? It's morally wrong, you're a bad person. I hope you have a hard time sleeping at night, but I doubt you do.
Vicki Lawson? That goes for everybody else involved.
Hi, my name is Vicki Lawson. I live 5.1 miles from Stamp. I'm in the Pembroke District. I wasn't sure if I was going to speak today or not. I just wanted to come and listen and get information. I knew some things about it. I've been watching and listening for years about it, being that I've lived in my current house since 2001. But I was hearing nothing but bad about it. I was hoping that I would hear more economic benefits from, you know, dollar-for-dollar about, because I knew, like, four, over $400 million of taxpayer money. I don't want to pay for that anymore. I don't. I don't want to pay taxes, especially if, like, if the Stamp plan is going to have something that's going to hurt people in my community. I don't want to pay taxes for that. And I don't want to pay taxes if we have to then pay the legal costs for the damage done to the people that work and live there. I don't want to pay taxes for that. I need a bang for my buck. I mean, you're appointed by the county legislator, right?
I'm high, but our board is appointed by the county legislator.
Okay. And then, but they are chosen, the legislators are chosen by the people who live there, one of which I am. So I would just say, I feel now moved that I'm going to have to contact legislators about, you know, this organization that's making this, the choice for my tax dollars. And I do live here, and Katie Rivers, she lives here, and Sarah, is it Sarah Johnson? I mean, the people who have been here and spoke, and I am just thankful that people came from so far away. My husband would have been here because he wanted to listen and learn more as well. But he does work, and it was not good that he was not able to come because, as taxpayers who are stakeholders in this should be invited to gain the knowledge about it. So I don't want to pay taxes. I don't want to pay for it. I don't want to pay for it. I think it's time now that we have to say that Stamp is not something that taxpayers in Genesee County should subsidize anymore. Thank you for your time.
Jacob Clark?
Jacob Clark?
Before I start, I'm curious, I know this isn't a question and answer type of thing, would you be willing to let me sit next to you in a chair at your level? And I have reason for that.
If you wish, sure.
Can you still hear me with this, if that's okay?
Sure.
Again, I know it's not a question and answer, but I'm going to hand you this, and I'm curious if you can read the highlighted sections back to the public. My name is Jacob Clark, I'm a registered Tonawanda Seneca Plan member, I'm Bear Clan, and I come to you, again, not as a question and answer, but as an equal and as a brother, so I rescant my brother. I'm wondering why I'm here and that disturbance, and I'm not at peace. Can you read to me?
The highlighted yellow sections? In the year?
Sixteen thirteen.
Okay, what does the A1 say?
We shall address each other as brothers. This shows that we are equal to each other.
And what does A2 say?
The first was friendship. The Hottasani and their white brothers will live in friendship. The second principle is peace, there will be peace between their two people. The final principle is forever, that this agreement will last forever.
Can you turn the page, please? Can you read the year of B?
Seventeen eighty-seven.
Can you read B1, please?
The Constitution united its citizens as members of a whole, vesting the power of the Union and the people.
Can you read B2, please?
This Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof and all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States shall be the supreme law of the land.
Can you please read B3?
This aspect of the supremacy clause reflected concerns that individual states were jeopardizing the flagelline nation's security by putting the United States in violation of its treaty obligations.
Can you turn the page, read C, please, and you're there.
Seventeen ninety-four.
And what is this?
Peace and friendship are hereby firmly established and shall be perpetual between the United States and the Six Nations.
Can you read C2, please?
The United States will never claim the same nor disturb them or either of the Six Nations nor their Indian friends residing thereon and united with them in the free use and enjoyment thereof, but the said reservations shall remain theirs until they choose to sell the same to the people of the United States who have right to purchase.
Can you read B1, please, on the year?
Eighteen ten. As what happened all too often during our nation's history, the use of fraud, bribery, and false claims resulted in the signing away of the Seneca land along the Buffalo Creek, including lots in ninety-four and ninety-five.
Can you read D2, please?
Eighteen thirty-eight, March. Proceedings of the Senate, the treaty had been obtained from the said Indians through false pretenses, those included bribery, forgery, alcohol abuse, and other means.
How about D3?
Eighteen fifty-five, George Whiting, Assistant Secretary of the Interior, reports Mr. Cutler and Mr. Forward tried to bribe Tonawanda, all the Indians refused. Both Cutler and Forward forged names on petition documents sent to Washington DC and proved previous Indian agents to be in collusion with the company. Eighteen fifty-seven, the new treaty with the US allowed the Tonawanda ban to buy back lands from the Ogden Land Company, which had been sold out without their permission in the treaties of Buffalo Creek.
Can you read E1, please?
Current day. Now we need executive assistance to get DEC to issue the permits, Jeremy Cooney, New York State Senator.
Can you read E2, please?
Sean Lahar, interim commissioner for the DEC. First off, I want to thank you for the assistance and priority focus put on getting the nine remaining permits and clearances issued, Steve Heig, GCDC former president.
Again, I'm not at peace. Thank you.
James Burnett?
Mr. Chairman, once again, I'd like to yield my three minutes to whoever will notice time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any hope?
I'm re-submitting a letter from the Allies of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, Western New York Environmental Alliance, and 57 other environmental faith, human rights, and good governance groups, addressing the investment groups behind Project Double Reed. I just want to name some of the organizations that have signed off on this letter. Alliance for a Green Economy, Citizen Action of New York, Clean Air Coalition of Western New York, Freshwater Future, Interfaith Climate Justice Community, New York Lawyers for the Public Interest, NYC Environmental Justice Alliance, New York Renews Coalition, Sierra Club Atlantic Chapter, Sierra Club Niagara Group, and Western New York Peace Center. Thank you.
I specifically yield my time to Ms. Howard, my colleague from Syracuse.
Yes, you wish, she yields her time.
Sarah Howard, H-O-W-A-R-D, Syracuse, New York. I ceded my time to Joseph O'Malley. I knew that Mark didn't want to hear any more from me, so Joseph read my statement about Project Double Reed. I just want to reiterate that I oppose the allocation of public monies to Project Double Stream, which will produce zero public benefits and copious public harms. And I want to make sure that everybody in this room is aware that GCEDC has two board meetings later this week, February 5th and February 6th. I'm very sure that all of the conversation will happen in executive session, as it always does, but you should still watch that livestream or go to Batavia, listen to what they're saying and what they're not saying, and keep your eyes on them. Watch those minutes, those minutes that will come out of those meetings. They're about to make some very critical decisions. They've heard a lot here, they've also received a lot of written comments. I hope they will take the time that is needed to actually review all of those comments, sit with what's been said here today, and make a decision that actually reflects what the public wants and does not want. Thank you.
Alora Mercino?
My name's Alora Mercino and I live in Ransfield, New York. Just wanted to add on to like the stuff I said earlier. I just have like some points I wanted to go over. Just been reading up on like what's been going on with this project for, basically since it started. But it's in violation of like a lot of laws, I'm not going to go over every single one. But the first one would be not consulting with the Tonawanda Seneca Nation at any point in this process relating to the Stamp project or any of the data centers or any of the businesses at Stamp is a violation of the Treaty of Canandaigua. It is also clearly violating the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. And in a few ways, this isn't even covering all of them, it would add to the greenhouse gases instead of limiting them, which the state has a limit that they're trying to set and meet and not go over. It would also disproportionately burden disadvantaged communities, being right next to the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. Another one is the state constitutional amendment for clean air and water passed, which is, I don't know if you remember, we voted on a few years ago, just saying that like we have a right to clean air and clean water. Not a question and answer session, but I'm just wondering like where is the DEC? This seems like something that is pretty pertinent to them. Where are they? Why are they not here right now? Honestly, where's the Fish and Wildlife Service? Why are they not here? They should be here too. The DEC should be involved in monitoring the Stamp project, and both agencies should be present at these meetings in addition to holding these after the majority of the public gets out of work. I was pretty lucky, I don't have to, I didn't have to work today, but I actually normally do. And I'll say this again, growth for the sake of growth is the ideology of a cancer cell. I speak in opposition to all three data centers and ask that all applications be denied. I am also in opposition to any industrial development at the Stamp project. I'm against cutting down any of the old growth forests or disturbing any of the wetlands that are fully encompassed and surrounded by the John White Wildlife Management Area, the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge, the Tonawanda Wildlife Management Area, and the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. None of these projects should be funded by taxes or given any tax incentives. 700 gallons of drilling fluid has already been spilled into the wetland from the construction at Stamp. Plug Power is the only current Stamp tenant and is financially in ruin, further proving that industrial development at the Stamp site is a failure. And I like what somebody said earlier, I think we should rethink the Stamp project. We should prioritize the rare jewel of old growth forests and extremely large and rare intact wetlands. And I'll finish with this again, the Bob Dylan lyric, "All the money you made will never buy back your soul."
Christine Abrams?
Christine Abrams. I come before you today as a citizen of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, Bieber Clan, and as a mother, grandmother, and aunt. I live on the territory of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and have all my life. I have opposed the Stamp site development since the nation first learned of it at a presentation by GCEDC at our lawn house. I come to not only state my overall opposition to Stamp development and the three data centers, but to, but it's to anything, everything that GCDC wants to put on that site. Anything and everything will impact the lands of our territory, the animal life, plant life, all that exists within our borders, but most of all the people and all that live on the other side of the woods, AKA the buffer zone, a fake term that's supposed to give some fake comfort that there will be no harm to the lands of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. We constantly hear you want to be good neighbors, but the truth is, we don't want you as neighbors at all. Your Stamp development, your Stamp development will certainly put a stamp on what we will lose on the other side of that buffer zone. You don't see us as a people living our lives as a people of the nation, as Ho'ang Nishoni with its own governance, as a culture with traditions and customs, our way of life. Your blindness, your greed, the false concern only continues the impacts indigenous peoples have suffered at the hands of colonialism, the stealing of our lands, the stealing of our children, the stealing of our languages, the stealing and destruction of our food, and many other atrocities. But on the other side of those woods is our land, is our government, is our language, is our traditions, is our customs and usage, and most importantly, our mothers, fathers, and grandmothers and grandfathers, aunts and uncles, but most importantly, is our children. All that is on the other side of the woods, is at risk, and that risk increases with the plan to put a data center right next to the territory. And environmentally unfriendly energy and water-guzzling monstrosity that certainly symbolizes what GCDC is and what New York State is, a monster. A monster that is committing cultural genocide because if the people can no longer pick the medicine plant that helped with pain, if the people can no longer find the strawberry, the leader of all berries, to make the soup for our strawberry ceremony, if the people can no longer hunt the deer that sustains families in the winter, or can no longer see the moon or the stars at night. Once was a clear view of its beauty and a timetable for our ceremonies, that is cultural genocide. And with those losses, is the loss of the knowledge that can no longer be passed on to our children, then there is cultural genocide. Our ancestors fought for our present day territory in the 1800s and in 1857, won in court the right to buy back their land. They became involved in an unknown process to put their trusted US law, for it was their duty at that time and continues to be our duty today to protect our lands and give thanks for all Mother Earth provides for us, for our future generations. Our ancestors fought for us and we were and are a future generation, and we are still fighting for our lands. That is the life beyond those woods, beyond the buffer zone, that you refuse to see. But it is my life, the life of the people of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. It is our home.
Okay, I think that's the last speaker. That will end the public hearings.
Can I make one more?
Sure.
Thank you. I didn't know I had to sign up for the different ones.
Oh, we get, we get them all.
My name is Karen Jones. I spoke at the earlier hearing for one of them, but I wanted those comments to officially be for all three. I also wanted to add just two brief things. Number one, it was my understanding that the GCEDC was going to present the public tonight with the financial incentives being offered to one or all of the data centers represented by Potentia, Rampart, and Double Reed. We were given nothing in writing at this hearing, only a quick statement about $125 million sales tax exemption, a something, something million mortgage tax exemption, and a supposed $143 million revenue, quote, "over 20 years." Based on what? No one here has been provided a single cost benefit analysis. No one was given a piece of paper tonight backing up the claims or explaining any such monies generated. I accidentally found something about finances by going to, by Googling GCEDC public hearing, town of Alabama, search, 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 and finally landed back on your page when you announced on January 24th. But the announcement you had on January 24th changed on January 31st. And it changed at noon, which is when our comments were due. And I just want to reiterate that that is not the letter of the law when it comes to this exact type of hearing. That is not giving the public the opportunity to respond in any meaningful way if we don't have a chance to look at anything in writing, even at the hearing itself. And in that same line, you mentioned that public comments would be open until this Thursday, February 6th, and yet someone mentioned tonight that there's a board meeting this week on February 5th, ostensibly to vote on this very hearing. Clearly, you do not want public feedback or transparency, and this is just heaping insult upon injury and is unacceptable and really doesn't meet, again, the letter of the law when it comes to what this hearing is supposed to be about. Thank you.
Thank you, you asked for everybody else's, but.
I mean, you got it in the transcript.
I just saw everybody else gave you one and you asking, and you didn't seem to want mine, so.
Okay, I think that's it. We'll close the public hearing. Thank you, everybody, for attending. We appreciate your comments. We will, we'll work on the transcription and preparing the information, and thank you.